Hey Amy.
Hi, Swaytha, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm hanging in there. I'm not, not feeling myself today.
Oh no.
I've come down with something, so I'm just gonna try to make it through and.
Yeah, I can hear it in your voice. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Someone is joining named Jonathan, and I don't know who this is. It must be, it's a public meeting. Um, okay, we will admit them.
Okay, um, it's a heads up that my internet has been a little spotty this afternoon, so I might just go off camera for a little bit and just let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Apologies for my tardiness. I was both coming back from an in-person meeting and suddenly Teams wanted me to log in with my non-existent Teams account. I had to try to open this link three times. I apologize. Okay, let's see, where are we? So we are in our agenda planning meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I have a, hold on, person check. Amy, is there anything I have to do to otherwise officially start the meeting? Are we good to jump in?
Um, I'll just do a quick call to order and roll call real quick. Um, I think you can just call who, who you see on the presenters and teams.
Okay, so meeting is called to order. I'm gonna do a quick roll call. Um. Let's see. Mary Ann?
Here.
Felice Te.
Here.
Uh, Swaytha?
Here.
Uh, and then on our attendees list, Hillary? And Jonathan, or are those members of our audience?
They are in our audience, so they are muted at this time, so they must be joining as public, members of the public in the public meeting.
Well, hello, members of the public. Thank you for being here. Okay, so I have a couple of ideas for, um, our December meeting as well as kind of how we can start to set up for the next few meetings. So I'm gonna share those, and then I would love to hear some feedback from, um, other members at the, in the meeting about how, how that all sounds. So, um, during our November meeting, we did a jam board activity. And I, I think it was great. We have a ton of content on these slides. Um, ideas from people, questions, and then we even started getting some responses to some of those questions from the department uh, participants in those meetings. So one of the things I would like to consider, um, is actually taking each one of those slides. So there are six of them. Um, each of them corresponded to one of our charges in our charter. It's actually make each of those a presentation that we would then ask departments to come and present on. Um, and I think we, I would wanna give each one their own with maybe the exception um, of the mechanism for ongoing review. Maybe that can be paired with something else. And so then that would effectively be our January through May agendas is actually having the departments prepare those presentations about, and so if we're looking at the first one, for example, actually, I think that one's hard. Let's go with an easier one, the uniform application procedures, for example. So if we're using that one as a, um, a whole meeting, then what we would be asking is, so here are the things, here are the questions that people had had, the ideas that folks had had, and we would ask the departments to come ready with presentations to speak to what their current, um, application procedures look like, any changes that are already on the horizon, and then any recommendations they would have or answers to the questions that they see here. And so then each meeting would progress through that, and that would, it would be a huge set of listening sessions in a large part for the task force in that structure, right? Because we would be getting a lot of content from the departments on what, what their current, you know, application procedures are, what might be changing with them, and how we start moving towards the barriers or, um, opportunities they see to moving towards more of a uniform application process. And then some discussion among the group, um, about how to kind of whittle down what we've heard into some specific actionable recommendations. And we would do that, like I said, basically January through May. Um, so I'll stop there with that concept. Uh, yes, Felice.
Thank you for, um, thinking through what this could look like. I appreciate it very much. Um, I like the general, I like the general idea here. I think one of the perks would be that folks can give public testimony to something that, um, to kind of a subject-specific area, um, and that would be, uh, not easy, but easier to organize for, for folks. Um, I also, I, I don't wanna lose that I think there's some legal stuff that we need to get clear on, like what is actually allowed? Could we have a uniform application process, or is there something getting in the way of that? So I would love some of the legal questions that I, I have asked to be part of these presentations. Um, and then I'm thinking, uh, I don't remember. I know we're supposed to make a, like, have a report by the fall. Um, so I, I appreciate that this would be January till May, uh, but I'm also thinking about, you know, what does it mean to write a report as a group? This is my first task force, so maybe there is a model that I'm not aware of, but that's been on my mind. Thank you, Mercedes, very much.
Those are great questions, and I would definitely say, kind of when I was thinking about the departments, DOJ is definitely one of those. But I, I think I'm also hearing you say that, like, maybe some of that, as you've kind of shared before, how do we have that information also presented um, directly? And like, maybe even that's like, does that have to come before or after? We've also seen some of these presentations. So that's just a question I'm asking myself. Right? Are they reacting to things, or?
I mean, I, what I had, um, suggested was maybe like a memo, um, to, because as the, the, the North Star for this is wages, and as we think about like what needs to change, I wanna understand, like, are there things that we cannot change? Are there, you know, are the, are departments' hands tied behind their back? Um, so I, I'm mindful of, like, I don't wanna have a two-hour discussion about something that will never ever change at the state of Oregon.
That is a very good point. I will say that I think that we do have an opportunity for both administrative recommendations as well as legislative ones, so.
Yeah, and so getting that super clear, like, in our report of, like, here's, here's what we can do, and like, so, like, yeah, maybe it is, if, you know, if this group decides, okay, it's uniform application, that we, we want that, here's what can happen administratively, and here's what happened, has to happen at the legislative level, just so, so people are just super, super clear on, like, what's actually doable, what can, what is a cultural change versus what is actual legislation and why that might take longer.
Great. Thank you for that. Uh, Swaytha?
Yeah, thanks, Mercedes. This is super helpful to hear. I think the question I had, and I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, um, is it that these presentations would be happening in the main meeting sessions, or that there would be like separate work group sessions based off of each of the outcomes that's outlined in the legislation?
I would imagine that those would be the kind of predominant presentations in each of those meetings. Um, so that we're basically spending an entire meeting talking about uniform application procedures, where we're hearing from multiple departments, what are their current application procedures, what are pending changes that they're already working on, what would be their barriers to a uniform process, and kind of just getting a lot of that stuff on the table. Um, I think it's a good point that it may lead to more subcommittee work. Um, but yeah, I was kind of thinking about tho, those being like, this, that, that's gonna be the topic for today. We're gonna get a ton of input on that. Um, we may actually not have a ton of time for discussion in that kind of structure, right? So that may precipitate that we need some, uh, additional subcommittee work out of that, but hopefully we'd be able to at least put a lot of clear information on the table about kind of what is the sandbox that we're playing in here.
Got it. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, so I do see that it looks like, I think it's one of the people who's a member of our public who has their hand up. I don't think we actually have a way of collecting um, public comment at this particular meeting. Um, Amy, I'm wondering if, uh, for the benefit of the person on the phone, if you might be able to put in an email address in the chat, that's assuming that this, that our audience can see that, where they could send, um, maybe what it is that they wanted to share, because I don't know if I have a way of including a member of, of the public in this discussion.
Yeah, you bet. I'll, I will post that in the chat. No problem. Thank you.
And I, I apologize, person on the phone, for not being able to actively include you in, in this particular meeting, but please come to a full task force meeting where we do have public comment. Um, okay, Mary Ann. Oh, you're still muted.
So is there any way for us to limit the amount of, um, uh, if we're gonna do January through May, can we limit, so we have the, some of the part of the meeting to do other stuff and some of it to do this? Uh, have our, our questions asked, maybe we have an hour and a half or an hour for this and then the rest for other purposes?
Yes, and I think as we continue to do our agenda planning meetings, we can figure out what are those other things that we need time for. Felice, go ahead.
Just, uh, one more thing. Uh, I have really enjoyed opportunities to learn about what other states and jurisdictions are doing. Um, and some of that's, you know, out, outside of the, this work time, but I, I'm mindful that, like, we have this three to four or five hours that we set aside every month. Um, so as we do this, I would also hope, if possible, if we could get some presentations from outsiders, and so then, I mean, I would love to hear the questions that, um, folks have from the state to, like, I'm thinking about the presentation, uh, uh, that I was able to see around what Maryland's doing around uniform application, just as an example, like, I just, we know this is an issue that's impacting, that, that this is an issue at every state, at every jurisdictional level, you know, um, I feel like there's an opportunity for even just like, you know, if we can invite, if someone's doing this well, you know, can you come in for 15 minutes, share about what you're doing at, at your government level? Um, and it can be a conversation with, you know, grantees, but also their peers at the state of Oregon.
Thank you for bringing it. So that brings me to my recommendation for the actual December meeting, um, which is actually to invite NAO to come and do a presentation that summarizes the policy labs that they have done and the ones that are pending. And so that would be able to give us an opportunity to see, um, because I know we've gotten, um, you know, uh, that we don't, our folks aren't necessarily able to attend those, and that's where some of this, like, other state information is kind of already being brought to Oregon. So my idea was for our December meeting is actually to invite NAO to come and do a big summary of uh, the policy labs that they've done, the ones that are pending. Um, I know they have, I'm gonna, I would ask them to try to structure their presentation to kind of hit these six um, different pieces and, and let us know who those other experts are, where those other states are that are doing this, um, as kind of like a first summary. And then I think a compliment to kind of our, uh, January to May presentations where we're doing mostly the department focus is that we could potentially, as Mary Ann mentioned, save some time for like a guest speaker to come and talk about their uniform application process. So we get a little bit of what is the reality here today, what are the possibilities that we're seeing in other communities? And so we're getting kind of like a full, uh, well-rounded presentation in that way. But my recommendation would be to start with NAO in December, since they have that very external view and the way they've been collecting and setting up those presentations. Uh, Swaytha, yes?
I love that idea from both of you. That's really great. Um, thanks for suggesting that, Felice Te, as well. I feel like the, um, the only question I have, or I guess maybe just a comment would be if we can plan out a calendar of which agency is gonna be presenting at which meeting, and then being able to collect questions, like specific questions from our task force on either the kind of data that we'd want them to present on, the types of specific outcomes that we'd want them to describe, if there are any, like, legal issues, like other folks mentioned, in implementing something like a new idea in our state for that agency. I think if we could do our best to aggregate those larger questions and some of the stuff that will require additional research from staff at other agencies, the more comprehensive those presentations will be. So just a, just a comment to try to plan ahead for those types of conversations.
Yes, and that's why I think I wanna use our jam board activity to build off of, because now we already have some of those, right? So we don't have to do like a new, what questions do you have on uniform grant making? Because we already have a bunch here. What we could do instead is actually compile those and list those, and then, you know, we could ask one more time, anything missing from this list. Um, but I think, uh, you know, this was kind of our, our opportunity to at least put some parameters around there. As far as which departments, um, I think that's a good question. I mean, I was kind of imagining that everybody would have to participate to some degree, some more than others, depending on how big of a, uh, of a issue it is for them. But I would be, I would love to, I think, maybe hear some feedback as well on how we figure out which departments don't have to present. Maybe that's almost the easier way to think about it. Um, Felice, go ahead. Oh, and then, hello, Helen, welcome.
Yeah, I, I'm totally open to that i- idea. Thank you, Mercedes. I think it's a really, um, the information that NAO has is a really important grounding that I think, uh, would really help all of us. I'd also hope that they would share information about, um, their wages study that they do once a year, as well as the, some high-level, um, uh, reminders to folks about the, the study that they did about government contracting. Um, I think that would be really helpful too for further discussions.
Okay, so the wage study, um, the government contracting, and the policy labs. Okay. Thank you for that. Helen, jump in.
Hi, sorry, I, I was on the phone earlier, so that was just me.
Oh!
So I'm gonna have to jump off soon, but I wanted to add this to the agenda, and it can just be a statement. Um, right now Meyer is working to provide some funding for research for NAO, um, which we're hoping to move in January. The purpose would be to, um, have a little extra capacity to look into the questions that neither the state agencies nor us as a task force can independently find on our own, particularly given our time constraints. So my, my only addition to the agenda would be to, um, ask task force members to think about what questions they would, um, potentially like to waive, and then, um, to be able to, some of it to NAO, since it's not something that we can really, uh, do as a group without taking up significant task force time.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your dedication, for fitting us in to your schedule when you were on the move. Um, I, I love that recommendation. I'm really excited to hear that Meyer is putting, is wanting to put some funds into the research. It does kind of bring up a little bit of a question for me about the task force and the resources that the task force may or may not have. So this might be a question for, um, I think for you, Amy, is, I know you had mentioned that there had been a procurement put out for like a facilitator. Was that connected to funds that are assigned to the task force, or was that just like extra money that DAS had available and wanted to put it towards this? I'm just kind of wondering if maybe there's an opportunity for the task force itself to also contribute some funds to what Meyer is thinking about with this NAO kind of doing additional research for us specifically.
As, as I understand it, there was some money dedicated from the legislature to the task force, but it's only for specific purposes. So I would have to do some research and find that out, unless, Swaytha, if you're familiar with, um, the purpose of those funds, if you could help us. If not, I could do some research and get back to you.
Yeah, Amy, you might, you don't look into that, because I think that, yeah, you're right, there was a specific amount of money set aside, but I believe it was just specifically for DAS to use for facilitation purposes, but you might wanna double-check on that.
Okay, I'll look into that and let you know. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, Mary Ann.
So, two things. One, can we have somebody organize the jam board? Because I know I was only putting things on the first page, and I know that there's like three or four pages of them. So if that could, you know, it, it might not be just a State Department, it might be another entity. So if they could organize the board, then maybe that would help us know who to contact. And then in our original charter, funding and contracting, uh, modernizing grant funding and contracting task force charter on page two, it talks about decision-making authority and that who we're making recommendations to. On page two, and it looks like it's human services, education, Oregon housing, community service, and then emergency management and the DOJ. So are you, when you say Monday, uh, I'm sorry, January through May, are you thinking that we would hit these four or five, or would they be others?
That might be a good filtering. I mean, like, I, like, one of the, for example, one of the comments that's on here is from the Youth Authority. So they're in our meeting and they're contributing, but they were not on that list that you mentioned. So like, I wouldn't necessarily wanna exclude them from being able to provide some input, given that they're in the meeting. Um, but that is a good question around how, you know, what are kind of the limits? I mean, I think the best way, the best thing that we're gonna be able to do with, like, organizing the jam board is really taking these into more of a notes form, and, and like listing out, these are the questions and comments that came from the task force members. So like, prepare your presentation to be able to speak to as many of these as, as, you know, reasonable. Um, but yeah, I do wonder how, like, how do we whittle this down without also leaving folks out? Because I think we have a pretty comprehensive list of department representatives, because these departments grant out. So like, if we make recommendations but then don't include the reality of, like, the Youth Authority, for example, then any grants that they might do are then not gonna follow. Oh, so yeah, they're there. Okay. So and that's everybody, right?
And we have two people on our board. We have Caitlin Hudson and Monica Moran that are both Oregon Youth Authority.
Okay, I was just reacting to, I didn't hear you mention them, and I was like, well, I want them involved. So if this is our, I mean, if this is our list, I think this is the full list of people who are of the, the departments who are coming, isn't it?
Yes, it should be all-inclusive. Yes, it should be.
Um, there's a, uh, Department of Equity Diversity Inclusion that's not on there. Yeah, two people from DEI. On our task force.
The, um, I'm, I'm not sure who you're talking about, Mary Ann, that is on the task force but isn't on this list. This, this list came directly from the Senate bill, and it's the agencies that are affected that, um, are listed in the Senate bill, and that's why we invited and included the folks who are on the task force. I'm not sure who you're talking about on the DEIB piece.
So Deb Lang and Kai Turner are both Oregon Office of Equity Diversity and Inclusion?
They are actually from education. Um, well, um, Deb Lang is from education, and, um, the other gentleman that you talked about is also from education, Kai Turner. They're both from education.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so, kind of going back to your comment then, Mary Ann, if this list is the list of all the departments, what was it that you were asking again?
I was asking if we're doing January through May and we would ask, uh, departments to answer the questions. Uh, how many, you know, who would do January, who would do February, who, you know, because there's more than four or five, there's, you know, a dozen different, uh, um, agent, uh, agencies or departments that are, you know, there's the Health Authority, the Oregon Youth Authority, the Housing Communications, Department of Emergency Management, Early Learning, Higher Education, you know, all of that.
Yeah. So. Each, each department would not get a month, each topic would get a month. So, as you mentioned, the jam board has six pages on it, because we have six different kind of bullet items we're supposed to be working towards. So what I suggested was that each one of those, so one of them is around per change, changing procurement for living wages. I might actually suggest that go last, even though it's number one. The uniform application procedures, uh, standard language and contracts, um, sufficient reporting requirements that are commensurate with funding levels, payment models, and then the last one is a mechanism for ongoing review. So my recommendation would be to take those six and turn them into five separate presentations. So the, uh, mechanism for ongoing review would kind of tag along with one of the others. And then each of those, uh, items would get a full day at the task force, where like today we are talking about this one topic, and then each department would be, uh, welcomed to provide, uh, some information in a presentation that is responsive to that one topic. So that's how we get to five. Uh, Felice?
Thanks. Uh, Kind of wanted to second what Maryann was saying about while this document makes perfect sense for when we're all interacting with it. If someone could change it to like a Word document and maybe identify some themes, I feel like, I mean, a facilitator was identified at the last meeting and like introduced, so I don't know their role. And it's also, it's not terribly accessible. Like there's things that I can't read because it's so small. So just, I think that would be a really helpful tool for us and for staff to get ready for these presentations, right? Thanks.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, so it sounds like at least this agenda planning group is on board with that structure. And so then yes, the next steps would be to like assign each of these to a month. And then kind of, as you mentioned, pull out the questions versus the comments and give the, because one of the other things that Amy mentioned as well is like, we want to give people ample time. So if we let them know the big wage conversation is going to be in May, so do whatever data collection you need to do about how your grant and contracting system allocates wages or limits allocations to wages or dictates allocations to wages or whatever. You get all that information ready for that May presentation, right? And we kind of scaffold it that way. But yes, we would need to turn these into more kind of like directions back to the departments. The who is a great question. Amy, I don't know if that's something that somebody within DAS or the facilitator Melinda could help us do? Or is that like something that I've just got to do? Let me know.
Okay, I, I think between you and I, we can work it out. Honestly, I did not hear back from Melinda on helping us any further with facilitation. I reached out to her a couple of times and haven't gotten a response. So I don't know if that means that her schedule is just filled up now or what that means, but I don't want to, I don't want to count on her too much at this point because she hasn't committed. So you and I can work it out.
Sounds good. Okay. Go ahead Felice. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. I was just gonna advocate that we do wages not last because it's, it's the North Star. It's the guiding light of this of like how all these practices are impacting wages. So I 100% understand that it is probably the hardest. So I, I think it would be cruel to say we should do this in January, but maybe we could do it in March. That way we have plenty of time to dig deep, but also like maybe have a part two. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. But let's see. So we have some time, but I would like at the next meeting to be able to tell departments, at least with the first one, it's going to be. So we've got the uniform applications, the wages, standard contract language, the reporting, and the payment models. Oh, and the ongoing value, review and evaluation. So I'm hearing kind of agreement that wages probably doesn't go first. But a proposal to not have it go last. Would uniform application be okay to go first? Or folks have an opinion about what should, what would go first? Felice is out of hand about the order or, yeah, okay.
I would, I think, I think I would vote the payment model to go first because it was identified with the campaign team, with the coalition as, as low hanging fruit of can we get these payments within 30 days? What would that take? And so having the discussion about like what's actually possible, what's actually legal, having conversations about how this causes financial instability for the organizations that the state is depending upon, I think would be a, a great way to start the year.
I like that. Which can go together? Because we need two that can go together. I'm thinking the ongoing review could maybe be paired with the standard contract language.
I also think ongoing review is, I really feel like that's on us. Like what does that look like? But I think that, I don't know if that makes sense, but I just, I don't know that we need to hear as much from this, the state staff because I think we're making a proposal about something that doesn't exist currently. Does that make sense?
We did have, yeah, but we did have some comments where people are like, we have, you know, a division responsive to this or we, you know, would want to identify some additional resources to support ongoing things. So we did have a little bit of discussion there, which I think so maybe some of the departments have some ideas there. But what if we were to put the standard contracting language and the ongoing review together? And then that leaves the reporting also gets its own, which probably makes sense. Go ahead, Maryann.
I was going to say, I think Lane County does it really well. Where you have your contract, you have a program plan that tells you what the outcomes are, and then you have the monitoring. So it's kind of three legs to the same stool. You have the contract that spells out your program outcome goals, and then you have the monitoring that supports how you did or didn't do based on that. So I think those three pieces together would be good.
I think in this context, the ongoing review and evaluation is of the department's grant making and procurement process, not of the nonprofit. So it's kind of like, how does the government not get to the point where it's again 10 years out of date with its practices? But it sounds like, I think we got a plan at least for some structure there. So we can at least let the departments know that the first kind of big presentation will be around the payment model. Whether we've got some additional helpers, just me and Amy, we can take that particular slide on the jam board and get those comments kind of more detailed out in more of a Word document form. And then should be able to, then going back to our December meeting agenda, use some time during the December meeting to say, so this is what was in the jam board. Is there anything missing from this that we want to ask the department to include in their January presentation? And if we can, maybe we can get January and February, which would be the uniform application, so that we kind of try to give as much advance notice as we can for what the kind of schedule is going to be and what those specific questions might look like. Okay, so let's jump back to December because now I feel like we're, we're jamming now. We're like creating a whole calendar. It's exciting. So for the December meeting. All right, so we've got our, our welcome and our roll call. Those are our standard depths. Public comment next. And then the NAO presentation. And I'm thinking like a full hour on that, right? Give them a lot of time to go through content, a lot of time for folks to ask questions about what was presented. So then, how many, how long are these meetings? Three, three hours? Okay, so roll call and public comment, that right there is about 20, call it 25 minutes, just in case. The NAO will be 60, so we still have an hour and a half left. The Meyer research, so I think we can definitely have some time there for Helen to kind of present some of what she's thinking or what Meyer is interested in funding. We can maybe even ask her, I think she's already gone, but ask her if she wants to kind of co-facilitate that portion to try to draw out the questions that we want to ask for that additional research project. Go ahead Felice. Please just go ahead and go guys, we're such a small group.
I think maybe a few minutes spent on like exactly what we're talking about today. Basically like here's the year, here's why we've designed it this way, here's like, and I, you know, I think the state should give us some deadlines of like, okay, if you have a question for the presentation on January, whatever, like we need your questions 10 days in advance. So, you know, thinking through, at least to get ready for January of what we need to get to the, the state and the departments to be able to provide a presentation that answers our questions.
Very, very good. Yes. Okay. So let's, let me pull out a little calculator and head up all of this time. Okay, so I think we give the Meyer presentation at least 30 minutes, the look ahead 45 minutes. And then we can also include probably maybe let's say a 10 minute break between the NAO presentation and the Meyer research. So we basically have like an hour and a half, an hour and a half.
Could there also be, like, I think there's just some naivete on my part around task forces. And like, my understanding is we're like writing a report. Is this something like that we're writing together over the summer and into the fall? Is this, I mean, I, you know, group work has challenges. I just, I literally like, don't even know what the process is leading into that report. Does that make sense?
It does, yes. Amy, do you want to share a little bit with us kind of what you envision happening as far as how we actually get to writing stuff? And this may also be a question that comes up in, it may also be a question that comes up in the other group, right, that are, are work plan group?
Yeah, you bet. That's a great question. I will say that we are very limited on what we can submit for the report. It's just two pages, exactly two pages. According to the statute, that's all that we're allowed to submit. So I know that we need to be very succinct in what it is that we're wanting to report out on to the legislature. So I think it's really up to this group on how you guys want to do that. If you want it to be a shared responsibility, or if you would like DAS to write the report. I mean, I know that this is something that's near and dear to your heart, so it, maybe it's a little bit of both. And I think we're open for that of whatever the group decides that they want to do. And I will send you that statute. It'll take me just a minute to find, but I'll send it to you.
Is that, and I'm curious too, is, so do our all task force, like that's the, that's the requirement or the maximum is two pages?
I am not sure. I'm not, this is the first task force that I've been assigned to, so I don't do a lot of work with task force. I can't answer that. Maybe it's Swaytha can help us with that. Swaytha, it looks like you've got your hand up. Can you?
Yeah, no, just going to respond to that. Thanks, Amy. I, I think what's required in statute is different from what you can create. If you wanted to create a longer document that is a bit more, you know, expansive for some of the findings that you have or the outcomes, I think you're more than welcome to. It's just whatever goes to legislation is what's like actually written down in statute as, as required to be a number of pages.
So what we would send to the legislators would be two pages, but whether we write something, we're allowed to write something longer?
Yeah, yeah. And I think what, what works in other settings, like for example, there is a task force that was created for addressing racial disparities and homelessness and that task force came up with three different foundational documents during their time in existence and those were a number of pages. And that's just published on their website. So I think that's something that if you'd like to use an example and can explore, that's available. Thanks, Swaytha.
Yeah, because I imagine if we just submit something to pages, at least if we actually want legislators to move on things, they're going to be like, well, where's the rest of the information? Go ahead, Maryann.
So if it's only two pages, can we ask Senator Campos to weigh in about what form that might take that would be most helpful for her to move it forward?
Yeah, maybe we include it in this last portion about the look ahead. So during our look ahead, we're going to talk about the January presentation. We're going to do a double check on the kind of questions that we pre-populated in our jam board and, you know, ask for any additional feedback and comments. And then we can talk a little bit about the report. I mean, I think we should think of this two-page minimum as our executive summary. Right? Like we're going to formally submit an executive summary. We may have other documents and whatnot. And then I think we can get some feedback maybe from both Representative Conrad and from Senator Campos about, you know, and maybe we won't know until we get a little bit further, but like, yeah, what is like the mediaist part that we want to have in that executive summary?
So that leaves us another 10 minutes, right?
Yes. Do we want to program that 10 minutes or let that be our rollover time for when things go over time? Do you have anything else, Maryann, that you wanted to have in the December meeting?
No, I think this is perfect.
Amy, I'm assuming that I'm allowed to reach out to NAO and tell them I would like them to do this presentation. Just want to make sure it follows all of our meeting rules.
Um, yes, I think, I think that's allowed. Does anybody disagree?
I think any one of us, any one of us can go directly to NOA. It's just we can't all be in the same meeting and reacting in the same meeting.
Right. And as long as we're not conducting any other business, it's just an invitation to come and speak.
All right. So I'll make that request and reach out to them and confirm attendance from them to do that presentation. I think we can also maybe keep it open a little just because of some of those limitations of us being able to attend the policy labs. And I know they're going to have more that we may want to have NAO come back in the future for another presentation, maybe after we've gotten through some of our department presentations when we're kind of closer to landing the plane, so to speak, and landing those recommendations. But I think this is a good opportunity for us to get that information while also making sure we're compliant with all the rules around kind of attending those, those larger community events. All right.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that link in the chat.
Yeah, you're welcome. And thank you Mercedes for facilitating.
Good agenda planning meeting, y'all. And December, here we come. I know I personally need to still do some of my workday trainings. So if anyone else still needs to, be sure to hop on that train as well. Amy, anything else you need from us before we close?
No, I think we're in good shape. I'll, I'll go ahead and post this agenda. I'll just reach out to you separately Mercedes on the jam board and getting that information pulled out into a Word document.
Amy and Mercedes. Yeah, I can help if you guys need any help in any way. This is Maryann.
Okay, thank you, Maryann.
Maryann, we may in fact need a facilitator for the project plan group because I think that's what we were hoping Melinda might do. And so if she's not available to support that work group, that's I think what we might need in the, in the short term for sure to figure out how we help that subgroup continue, like able to finish that document so we can move that forward. And then we can consider any kind of And then we can consider, um, any kind of report back from that group, maybe in the January or February meeting. Give them a little bit of time to get into it.
That would be great. Mary Ann, is that something you're interested in helping with?
Yes, any way I can be of help to this task force.
Okay, I'll reach out to you and we'll, um, get something scheduled on the calendar and get that, that subgroup going because they haven't met yet. So, um, I'll reach out to you separately. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for all your help, Amy.
You bet. I'm a little under the weather. Sorry guys, but appreciate it. Putting up with me.
Thank you for being here.
You bet.
All right. Well, we'll call that good for today and adjourn.
Mercedes, are you also going to follow up with Helen about the, her presenting?
Yes, I will. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Goodbye.
Bye everyone. Take care.
Thank you. Take care. Bye bye.